We'll call to order the Planning Commission meeting for Thursday, June 18th, 2020. Please stand and join us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Mr. Harlecker, would you please call the roll?
Yeah. A lot of people are missing.
Here.
Commissioner Casey?
Here.
Sorry. Commissioner Schmalki?
Here.
Commissioner Geisler?
Here.
It should be noted that Commissioners Haikula and Brody are not at the meeting at this time.
And I'm here as well.
Pardon?
I'm here as well.
I didn't say, I'm sorry. Chair Schwartz?
Here. All right, our first order of business this evening is to adapt the agenda.
So.
Second.
Motion by Geisler, second by Nablock. Any changes, discussion, corrections? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Agenda is adopted. Next, we have approved the minutes of our May 21st meeting.
Chair Schwartz?
Commissioner Nablock?
I move that we approve the minutes from the May 21st meeting.
I'll second.
Motion by Nablock, second by Schmalki. Any additions, corrections? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Minutes are approved. First order of business is planning case 20-4, a lot split at 10506 Hanson Boulevard, Coon Rapids United Methodist Church. Mr. Harlecker?
Good evening, Chair and Commissioners. This is a request by the United Methodist Church for a lot split. This is the property here, highlighted or outlined in black. This is the service road for Coon Rapids Boulevard. What's being proposed is to split this, approximately this location here, with this small triangular piece being transferred to the church, and the city would then retain ownership of the remaining part of the parcel as street right avoid for the service road. Here's the lot split, as you can see. Parcel B will be kept as street right avoid, and Parcel A will be provided or transferred to the church, so they will own, go back to the, they will own this piece here as well as this, and this is their main parcel down here. Parcel A will have to be combined with the adjacent parcel here, and then when this parcel does develop, part of the process will be replating all this as one lot. With that, I'll answer any questions. Staff is recommending that the lot split be approved with the condition that engineering comments be addressed, and Parcel A be combined with the abutting United Methodist Church property.
Thank you, Mr. Harlecker. Commissioner, any questions for Mr. Harlecker?
Chair Schwartz?
Commissioner Nablock?
I have a question for Mr. Harlecker. The 1,920 square feet from Parcel A, is that going to affect, once the plaid is eventually presented and brought before the commission? Will that involve a park dedication fees in addition besides the regular addition of square foot taxes?
Yeah, when this, when this larger parcel comes in to be replatted, they'll be required to pay whatever park dedication fees are applicable at that time.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Casey?
Mr. Harlecker, is there development pending in that other area that you're saying it could be attached to?
At this point, no.
Okay, but it's available.
Commissioner Casey, at some point, it will get developed.
Combined with that?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Mr. Harlecker, is the petitioner present?
Yes, they are.
Anything they would like to add at this time?
I don't see any questions.
All right. All right, we need to have a public hearing on this matter, so at this time, I will open a public hearing in planning case 20-4, a lot split at 10506 Hanson Boulevard, Coon Rapids United Methodist Church. Anyone wish to speak at the public hearing? Seeing no one, we will close the public hearing and retain discussion by the commission.
Mr. Schmalki?
I will, in planning case 20-4, make a motion to recommend approval of the proposed lot split.
I'll second it.
With the stated conditions?
With the stated conditions, thank you.
Thank you. And we have a motion by Schmalki, second by Nablock. Any further discussion? Hearing done, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion is carried. This is a recommendation by the Planning Commission and a decision by the City Council at their July 7th meeting. Good luck. Our next case, planning case 20-6, is site plan approval for a multi-tenant commercial building at 1825 Gateway Drive. Sambatek? Mr. Harlecker?
Yes, Chair and Commission, this is a request for site plan approval for approximately 7,900 square foot multi-tenant office building at this location here. Hanson Boulevard, Gateway Drive coming in with Northdale being the east or southeast leg of that intersection. McDonald's, Taco Bell, existing buildings are shown in the air photo there. This is the site plan for the project. You can see it's situated in this area here. This area to the north is fled plant and wetland and undevelopable, so development is concentrated in this area here. We do have a proposed drive-through on the south side of the building. There is enough stocking room to accommodate that. Parking on-site is, meets city code. There is some kind of ad hoc temporary parking here, but that has always been intended to be parking for this building. This is the access coming in off of Hanson. So it does exceed the required parking per city code. This is the grading plan, this stormwater pond here. Most of the stormwater was taken care of in the existing stormwater ponds that have been constructed over the years. Dumpster enclosure is to the back of the building here. The exterior material, that'll be consistent with the material of the building. Exterior lighting, there is a standard that's been set with the previous development, not so much a standard but a style, and the exterior lighting for the site will be consistent with that style. For landscaping, the PUD landscaping plan does show landscaping along this backside here, so that will be installed. Otherwise, the landscaping and site is sufficient. As you can see from the air photo, there is a sidewalk that extends past Taco Bell to the property line. That'll be extended into this site from this point here, and then connect with the sidewalk for the building, and there'll be a crosswalk across here to accommodate that crossing. The exterior of the building, very similar to that of the existing multi-tenant building with Jimmy John's and Caribou in it, with the brick exterior, the Eiffel up here. The applicant is in the audience, and they do have a materials board that reflects that. With that, staff is recommending approval of the site plan with the following conditions: all engineering comments be addressed, site security agreement be entered into with the city, all signs require a separate permit. There is a monument sign that'll be out along Hanson Boulevard, multi-tenant signs, so that'll accommodate some signage for this building as well as the building signage. Sidewalk be constructed that connects with existing sidewalk on the Taco Bell site, and with an addition to that, that a crosswalk be installed across the drive aisle connecting it with the sidewalk along the building. Light fixtures be consistent with those established in the PUD. Decorative light fixture be installed on the peninsula adjacent to Taco Bell right here. That will match the other decorative lights that extend down along the sidewalk out to the main drive here. And I noted this here, crosswalk be installed across the drive aisle adjacent to the Taco Bell site. With that, I'll answer questions. The applicant is also in the audience with a materials board sample and can answer questions also.
Thank you, Mr. Harlecker. Commissioner, any questions for Mr. Harlecker?
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Geisler?
Mr. Harlecker, I sent you some notes earlier, but the question of the unimproved parking spaces that are already there where they're asphalt but not curved, those have never been considered for any of the existing development for parking requirements?
Commissioner Geisler, no, they have not.
Okay, so they are bonus parking for as far as?
They just evolved.
Okay. And then the other question, if you could go to the aerial picture there, you know, and it's funny because it's in this picture, it's in the Google Street View, and I drove by there today, there is almost always a semi-offloading in this road feeding into the Jimmy John's, Caribou, and it happens all the time. Has there been any discussion with the existing tenants and the future tenants of where service for these things will happen, where these semis will offload? Because there's just not a lot of room here.
Yeah, I agree with that. They have not been, there are not designated loading and unloading bays in the PUD, so that's the best spot for them to unload. I think with this site here, given the size, there might be a more, better opportunity to actually maybe pull off and do it on-site for here. Maybe the applicant can speak to that, too. Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for Mr. Harlecker?
Oh, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Casey?
So, Mr. Harlecker, how many tenants would be possible in that building? Is it being assembled for four or five, or, and they all have separate entrances? Is that what I'm seeing?
Commissioner Casey, this elevation here shows five tenants. They do have the capability to provide fewer, larger tenants with the floor plan. It's really an open floor plan inside, so they've got flexibility as to how they want to split it up.
And then it extends along the north edge, just around the corner, part of that is exposed as tenant space also?
This here?
Yeah.
That would be this tenant here. That's the side window for this one here. It's not an additional tenant space.
Okay. Then I had a question about the landscaping. Do I understand that right, that there's going to be landscaping on the west side that would, that would, I'm looking at the landscaping, I didn't see it along that drive-through stacking space.
Right. On the, the PUD landscaping plan does show landscaping along here, and staff is recommending that that landscaping be installed.
Okay.
It's not on here, but it should be added as a condition, condition eight.
Mr. Chair.
So, condition eight would be?
West side landscaping?
Additional landscaping on the west side.
Consistent with the PUD landscape.
Okay, thank you. And I drove down there, I drove by there this evening on my way there, and yes, there was a semi-unloading right at, you know, just to the north of Taco Bell's property, so they had it opened up, and I don't know how long they were there, but.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Schmalki?
Mr. Harlecker, do you mind taking us through again with the comment about the semi? Can you show us again the flow for the drive-through, how that?
Yeah, the drive-through goes, it'd come around this side, north side of the building, and that's the drive-through lane, right there.
And then can you go back?
And then it exits out on the south end of the building.
Okay, and the aerial view again, where it's the, yep, that view. So, you can see where the semis, that this semi is parked. Do we anticipate that this is going to be an area of concern then with the drive-through, right? The drive-through will come out about where that semi is, correct? Not that the semi is permanent there, but knowing that they use that space, I do tend to agree. It feels like there's a concern we need to probably address. I'm not sure what the answer is, but I don't know if the...
I think everybody will agree that congestion is something that occurs regularly in here.
We want to make sure that the traffic can move around, right?
But there is room to get around, you know, in a narrow space. It's not totally blocked.
Okay.
And times that I've been, the people have just taken turns to get by the semis. And this drive, this comes out, right opposite the...
Jimmy John's?
The Jimmy John's there, or the...
And the Holiday.
And the driveway. So I don't know that you can have semis parking here and blocking the drive-through lane for a Caribou Coffee. It's been my experience that most of the time, they're parked up here by the Holiday Station.
Okay.
Up in here, and then actually right by the station itself.
So I'm wondering if, do we need to add like a no parking area there? I mean, is there any sort of restrictions we should be requesting to help ensure that semis are not loading and offloading in that particular area? In case they hang over the exit coming out over the drive-through would come out, things like that, would they be blocking? So today, because they're parked across from the Jimmy John's, people can still get in and out of there, but I'm thinking now, once we have new driveways opposite that, if they tend to hang over, or they create a blind so that traffic coming out can't see to turn right or have to make a wide turn around, I just see it as problematic. So, and I'd love to hear all the petitioner, what the petitioner thinks about, too.
Yeah.
But seems to me like we should do something to say that you can't load and offload there or park there once this gets constructed.
One option might be, you know, dedicated no parking signs.
Correct.
Chair Schwartz?
Strategic locations within the development.
Do we add that then as another condition?
I wish the attorney was here.
Yeah, I know, I do, too.
I think we can.
Okay.
You know, the only issue might be that that condition not only affects the petitioner, it also affects the...
Exactly.
The inside, the existing property owners.
It's a safety issue, it's a congestion issue, it's a number of things, yeah.
Again, that might be something that can be addressed as part of the association documents that I know, I believe we're still, are we still working on those?
I think so.
Okay.
So, is there a recommendation on how we should phrase this to include it in the conditions? To make sure that it is addressed, since we don't have legal counsel? Is it something we make a note that it has to be followed up with before the next step of the process?
I need to add in here, I mean, I don't think we...
You need to come to the microphone to speak, please.
...for other properties.
And state your name and address for the record, please.
Jonathan Adam. I'm here for H&amp;W Family Development. We're the original developer of the entire property. As you know, it's all been under PUD, accepted, proposed plans have been in place since 2007. I understand what you're asking. I think, though, that putting a sign up across from somebody else's property, not ours, right now, we're going to have parking, a parking strip on the east side. They're not going to be able to park there anymore because there's going to be cars there. So, we can't, I don't know how you can dictate a sign on another property adjacent to them. So I just want to, I don't, it doesn't seem like that can happen in the circumstance. What I can tell you is that the deliveries for the lot that we're talking about tonight have been designed, and they can do a full circle around the building. So we actually decreased the size of this building from the original PUD plan that you saw, meaning just, I think we were at 10,000 feet, and we're down to 8,000 because I did recognize that we feel like it'd be nice to have more parking instead of less there. So we've actually gone over the code on parking compared to where we were before, and then we also made sure that we could loop a truck around that drive-through lane. You know, as far as the other properties, you know, I think what's happening probably is just because there's nobody there, they're using it, right? And they'll find another way, and they'll have to find another way to do their deliveries in order to maintain that flow. So I don't think that's untypical of any other developments either, and this is a private road, so it's more like an internal circulation rather than a, you know, standard type of street that the city would have.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Mr. Harlecker, a question on the landscaping. Is there any need or requirement for landscaping on what would be, I guess, the south property line abutting Taco Bell?
There was not. I mean, it doesn't say the commission couldn't look to add maybe another three trees on there, but there was, that was not shown on the PUD landscape plan. I mean, there is room along there to put additional trees.
All right, thank you. Any other questions for Mr. Harlecker at this time? All right, the petitioner, would you like to give any presentation, your materials board and anything else that you might want to add?
Can I pass this around? Or would you like to do?
Yeah, that's fine.
So, what we've decided to do here, we would like to finish off the development at this point, and so we have, one of your other items tonight is the daycare that you'll be discussing, and this was our last lot, so we decided that we'd like to, you know, move forward to put a plan together. At this point, we have no tenants identified at all. It was partly because we'd like to do the construction phase at the same time that the daycare was looking at it, to limit the disruption for the rest of the tenants in the neighborhood there. So, the materials are going to be pretty much a replica of the building that the Caribou and Jimmy John's are already in right now. The color palette's the same, same architect, same design, construction method, all those things. So, I appreciate your time tonight, and if you have any other questions, I'm happy to answer them. I think, you know, it's just nice to see that we're finally getting to the end here, and we still want to provide a good product for the development, so.
I have a couple of questions for you.
Okay.
What's the width of the roadway there between what would be this building and the building with Taco John's?
Taco Bell?
No, Taco John, the one across. Right, Jimmy John, I'm sorry. Looks to me just shy 30 feet.
You know, I don't know the answer. Do you have it?
I think it's 30 feet.
30 feet?
It's wider than typical drive lane because of the semi, you know, delivery concerns.
And I think we widened it, actually, didn't we?
We widened it out to make sure that there was more maneuverability there.
Okay.
It's wider than a typical drive lane.
And would you have any problems with us including a condition that all deliveries to this building be from the rear drive, so that we would not have additional semis on that roadway in front?
I think that's, I'm not opposed to looking at the delivery system and figuring out how to make it work, but I wouldn't want to see any restrictions there because I don't even know who the tenants are. Could have a clothing tenant, they may not have semis. If it's a food, maybe they have semis, maybe they don't. Every tenant kind of has their own method on how they arrange for deliveries, and I think it's tough to say right now to put any kind of restriction on that. And we did design it, as I said, to accommodate that delivery method through the rear, but I would hate to have to put a restriction on something where we didn't have anybody else have a restriction in the complex for deliveries. Nobody else had that requirement.
Commissioner, any questions for the petitioner?
I do, Mr. Commissioner.
Commissioner Casey?
So you're saying that drive-through behind the building goes from the north down the west side, that'll accommodate a semi?
Right.
Okay.
We actually made it wider. We changed this a little bit to help accommodate some of these things that you're asking about.
Okay.
So we pushed the, where you guys see the temporary parking now with the pavement, that's actually pushed further to the west, so we did enlarge the drive aisle from what you see currently today, so that'll actually widen out a little bit there when you're coming around the curb.
Okay.
So that was to help with the truck movement as well.
All right. And then the interior roads are, you're saying is 30 feet wide as opposed to 24? Is that, 24 is pretty standard? So the interior drive lanes?
Yeah, I think it's 30 feet from the edge of the parking stall to the curb line on the east side.
Now, please come to the microphone if you're going to speak, please, and give your name for the record.
Chad Ayers, civil engineer, Sambatek. Yes, we widened that out to 30 feet from the end of the parking stall to the curb line, the existing curb line that you guys are referencing as Jimmy John's, the existing curb line. So, you know, typically 24, 25 feet is pretty standard, so we widened it out to 30, just to give some more maneuverability there.
So it would accommodate the fire truck and things like that, too?
Correct. As you'll see with the new creations' presentation tonight, and that existing right in, right out, or right in off of Hanson, you can see that that intersection there becomes kind of a congested area. So we not only widened out the drive lane width, but we widened out the curb radiuses to allow more maneuverability room, whether it's just a passenger car or a small box truck that's delivering, like Jonathan said, you know, we don't have any tenants lined up, so we just widened everything out to give more maneuverability, but I hope that answers your question.
Yeah, and then just as an aside, when I drove down that area tonight, when I came here, I didn't have any trouble getting around the semi, or, you know, there wasn't like backed-up traffic or anything like that. I, I came in off Hanson and, um, just surveyed the spot and there was the semi, but, I mean, it was easy to get around him and there was only one, so. I, I hear ya, thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, Commissioner, any other questions for petitioner at this time?
Chair Schwartz.
Commissioner Knoblauch.
I, I don't have a question, but I have more of a statement for the commission. Uh, I know we've used it in the past, but when, when it's become an issue, we've, uh, recommended having hours of operations for deliveries. So, if it does become, uh, an increased issue or problem, um, that would be something uh, outside of our scope perhaps, and that maybe, um, if it does become an issue that, uh, the applicants consider, uh, recommended hours of delivery. Cause we have recommended or imposed that on other applicants in the past. So, that's, that's all I have to submit there.
The issue, problem with that possibly would be if we don't make that a condition now, tonight, when we handle the case, we can't come back and add that later. It would be ha, something that, it would be out of our purview.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Schmalky.
I, I think it's a, it's a good recommendation and, um, and good idea. I think the challenge is that, um, we haven't imposed that on any of the other tenants and so forth of the other existing buildings. So, I'm not sure that it would be fair to impose it on this particular site, um, you know, because of the concern raised today. So, um, I think if the, if the width they think can handle it, my biggest concern is traffic coming out of that, um, site to come, you know, to go, um, I don't remember the direction, but to go like past the Holiday towards McDonald's and so forth. If the semis are parked there, can they see around it, et cetera? That's my main concern. So, you create, uh, an obstruction there. So, I'm, if, if that is, um, becomes a problem, I'm going to rely on, assume that, um, other, uh, areas will take care of putting in the appropriate parking restrictions if they need to be applied. That makes sense to me, too. And, and being as it is a wider aisle, it wasn't any problem getting around it. Good. So, I, I agree, if we didn't stipulate it for other businesses there on that site- It wouldn't be fair. We should do it for this one. But I raised, talking about instances that we have, and maybe those were standalone businesses that, you know, didn't encompass the, um, the shopping areas, you know, multiple businesses, so. Yeah, one instance was where it was directly adjacent to a, a residential home. And so, we, to accommodate that, to make sure that it wasn't- Oh, I think you're right. Yeah, interfering there, we, we did that, so.
Ms. Chair.
Uh, Commissioner Geisler.
Thank you. Um, just for discussion, I, I know we're talking about this specific site, but as the applicant said, there's another site that we're talking, considering later today. Um, there is going to be a significant increase in volume of traffic in this one little road.
Mm-hmm.
Um, that is still, even though thirty feet wide, still only two lanes, one in, one out. Um, you know, I, I think the way this site is laid out, if deliveries were happening on the north, the west, or the south side, and the vehicles are parked outside of the road, I think that's great, I think that's fine. Or if they're occupying parking spaces, again, we're fine, staying out of the roadway. I would assume something around city ordinances of not parking in the middle of a road are there. Um, you know, the existing semis park where they park because there's nothing else past Caribou and Jimmy John's, there's nothing there, so it doesn't really matter. But, as it is, uh, we know that Caribou and Jimmy John's need deliveries and they use semis. We know that they will be parking there, parking somewhere in this space, and they will ostensibly be using this lot to unload or offload be, if they can't park in that roadway. The other concern I have is, you know, most things that have a drive-through tend to have a morning rush. Um, even Taco Bell has breakfast now. And so, when you start talking about the stack-up space of Caribou, which frequently stretches into that roadway, you have the stack-up space where people are exiting whatever this, this new one would be, as well as the surge for a daycare center, which primarily has a lot of drop-off in the morning and in the evening. I, I just have concerns about the entire traffic pattern of this development at this point, based on what is going in. Um, the four retail, five retail buildings here, um, I think will probably be fine from that perspective, but throwing the childcare center on the end of a dead end, where there's, the only way out is past two drive-throughs, actually three, if you wanna throw Taco Bell's in there, and the semi unload-offload place. You know, I, I guess my, my question is, have we really looked at the traffic levels of what could be surging here in the mornings and in the evenings when pickups are happening? Today, I went at about six o'clock, it was pretty dead. But, I, you know, I don't know what that would be around four o'clock, five o'clock, when the daycare is busy. And I know we're gonna talk about the daycare later, I have different conversations there, but this is the primary roadway that will be impacting this. So, I, I think the building is great, I think the, the, the site layout for what the plan is for this site is good. I have concerns about what will happen when we put the daycare on the end and everywhere else as a full unit, which is kinda what we're charged here, is to look at the entire area around it. So, uh, I, I'm, I'm on the fence here about where, how this is gonna shape out. Um, I'm not concerned about parking for this, for this specific space. Um, it's just the onloading, offloading commercial levels for the entire area here. And without some sort of shared agreement of where semis are gonna be, I feel like we're gonna create bottlenecks and accidents and, you know, putting in sidewalks, we're gonna have more pedestrians around. I, seems like we're building up more risk in this space than may be necessary.
Commissioner Schmalky.
So, Commissioner Geisler, so are we, is it concern still about the location of the semis? Just to be clear, or is it the overall traffic flow? Because I, I would've assumed that when the P U D was being first proposed and knowing the types of business we were, um, hoping to go in here and the road, you know, the road development that was planned, that the traffic flow had to have been considered in terms of general traffic flow. The semis, I, I think, is maybe where, I, I think we're both a little bit more concerned, where it increases the, the concern, is just with the added semis, not, for me, it's not the, the general traffic flow cause I'm trusting that they planned for that with the one-way in, the one-way out, and so forth, to help ensure the safety from that perspective. I, I'm sorry, the que, and the question to you then is still, is the, uh, cause it wasn't clear, is your concern still with the semis then? And the, you know, the loading and unloading from that perspective, or are you talk, still talking general traffic?
Ms. Chair, for me? The, I, I believe that if we can move semis to unloading or offloading to the northwest or south of this development for the area that addresses that, whether that's a restriction on here, or whether that's strongly encouraged, whether that's a city code level thing of not blocking a road for parking, uh, I, I think there's a couple of ways we can address that. I would maybe see what city has to recommend there. What I, I guess what I would question, and I, I think is my open side of this, is did we consider that the business that would be going in where the childcare center's proposed have such a surge in traffic of ostensibly seventy to a hundred and fifty vehicles in a two-to-three hour window, twice a day, for pickup and drop-off when that building is at full capacity? And, or whether it was just considered for general retail, which is a little smoother over the day? And if we've done, I mean, this, the, as, as was alluded to, this was plotted out, uh, fourteen years ago. So, have things changed with the traffic volumes that we're looking at? And have we really looked at the traffic analysis here? And should we maybe pause to cons, to see if there is enough flow through here or not?
Chair Schwartz.
Commissioner Knoblauch.
I have a question for the planning department, Mr. Harlecker. Um, with the development, with the Honda dealership, with Taco Bell, with all the increase in development in this area, has the planning department for the city done any in-depth, uh, traffic analysis in this area that we're looking at today?
Uh, Commissioner Knoblauch, we have not. Um, I believe when the Honda dealership came in, they did provide, uh, traffic data based on what they would generate. And it was determined that, uh, the existing, uh, main drive coming through there could handle that, the traffic, along with the existing development and future development at this end of the site.
Good, thank you.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Schmalky.
So, I guess where I'm still hung up is, I think, um, I, I think in terms of what has been presented to us today, I don't see, and I think I'm hearing from the rest, that I don't see there's any problems with what's been presented today. Is it something, is it our place to be, um, addressing the, the semi situation? Um, or is that something that we are asked, we're, and I wish we had legal counsel here today to help us with this? I think that's where we're a little bit at a loss of, do we somehow attach this concern to what's presented with, to us today? Or does it, is it something that we're addressing back to city, uh, staff to look into? To see if there needs to be some improvements there?
Well, uh-
I just don't know, cause it's the whole area, I mean, cause this is a plan, right? The road is, i- is, i- it's a, an outcome of adding this, right? But, I, I don't know what we're, I, I feel like we should be able to move forward and approve or, you know, make a decision on this today. I'm just not sure how to handle the traffic situation. Cause I don't feel like it should be just on this particular, um, proposal that this burden is being placed.
Yep, Commissioner Schmalky. I think with the, the design, the layout of the traffic flow around this site, this site here can accommodate, you know, the, the deliveries, um, for this, for this building. Um, does it address the existing conditions further down the road? Um, it, it does not.
If challenges come up, right, with the semis in there, with the added flow of traffic, what is the process that would take place to address that? That would be brought up to the, to the city council, correct, wouldn't it? And to staff, to look into a traffic study and to see what changes could be made at that time?
We, we could do that, um. The, the gray area for me, without a legal background, is these are all private.
Right.
Private roads in there.
Mm-hmm.
Um, I'm not sure what authority we as the city have to go in and, uh, correct perceived problems.
Okay.
Um, I don't, I, I don't have an answer for that. I mean, it's certainly something we could look at. Um, we could, we, the commission could add as a condition, uh, maybe asking staff to research it and, um, if possible, come up with a, a mechanism to address, um, uh, traffic issues, truck deliveries, um, if they become a, a more of an issue in the future.
Commissioner Geisler.
So, if, if I maybe reword that, Mr. Harlecker, if we were to add a condition that staff perform a traffic analysis between, with the whole site as planned to be developed between this planning case, twenty-six and twenty-five, and remediate any issues found within that, would that get to the heart of that matter? If any issues are found?
It would. Um, Commissioner Geisler, typically with, uh, traffic studies related to specific developments, um, the applicants, um, pay for their, the cost of these traffic studies. Um, I don't know how that would work out, how we would do that in the future, if it, you know, if we were to add that as a condition.
I'm, I'm still struggling because the problem isn't being caused by them today. By the new, by the new proposals, um, it's not, that's caused by this. It is going to contribute to it, but it's not, I mean, what's bringing it up today is the fact that we've seen semis there, so we're anticipating there's going to be additional flow. I think, I, I'm tending to say, I don't know if others agree, if we just, if, if we can trust that if there are challenges, that there is a process in place that will address those traffic concerns at a, at a, at a future date, I'm fine moving forward with just, you know, looking at the conditions that are in front of us for this proposal. But if it is something where if we don't address it today and add it as a condition somehow, that it then, if it's a problem in the future, the ci, this, um, the city's hands are tied in being able to do anything about it, then I'm concerned. So, so I'm not quite sure still how to move forward here.
Um, I think maybe at this point, um, we understand the concerns for it, and we do have some time to research it before it actually, you know, goes to council.
Okay.
And, um, maybe have some more solid answers for you, um, once we have an opportunity to look into it a little more.
So, would we still be making our motion on this today, then?
I, I think you can make it as, uh, included in the, in the motion, but, um, I would be hesitant to add it to a condition to this, your recommendation on this specific site plan.
But we're making the decision today. We're not making a recommendation, we're making the decision.
Yep.
So...
And we have till July tenth, technically, according to this.
Which, which would be before our next meeting?
It would be, yes.
Right. And my intent is not to add extra burden onto the petitioners here today, that's, I wanna make that clear. It's like, because, again, I'm not sure that they're the ones that are causing this. Um, and hence, that's my question, is where does the responsibility fall if there is a problem? So, where is it best to address this? So, is it something, if we were to, do we postpone a decision until we get an answer on it?
Well, we can't postpone, we've gotta make a decision because-
Chair Schwartz.
The, uh, time expires prior to our next meeting.
Got it.
Um, Chair Schwartz, we could, the city does have the option of extending it, uh, for sixty days.
Okay.
If, if you so desire.
Chair Schwartz.
Commissioner Knoblauch.
I have a resolution. Uh, I'd like to make a proposal in planning case twenty-six. No, you don't wanna visit?
We still need a public hearing, so you can't-
Oh, okay.
Can't make a motion yet. We see the petitioner came up, is there something he wishes to add?
Yeah, I was wondering.
I, I fully understand what your concern is with the delivery system here. Um, I mean, this thing was, traffic studies were done, design guidelines were done. This was a year and a half in process. This design is in place, there's really no way to change that design necessarily at this point. You already have property owners there. Um, and, and I agree with you that placing the burden on one property, you can't, there's really no way to do that. So, here's my suggestion. I'm happy to reach out to the Taco Bell Holiday and the building owner of Jimmy John's and Caribou and just talk to them, um, on our behalf to say, hey, we need to figure out a solution here, if, if there is a problem. Um, I've not been made aware of a problem. I, I understand that there was a semi there tonight, but it was in the parking stalls that technically are already on our property and not, um, designated for, um, anybody else. I mean, it can be used, and that's why we put them there. My point, though, is, um, there's nobody there today, so that's probably why the semi use it. They're gonna go to the least resistant path, right? Um, so, we can certainly work together as a whole and in the private development to figure out the delivery system on internal roadways, um, to accommodate this. I, I, I just don't know how you can restrict and add clauses to certain properties and not others and, in this idea. And they just need to figure out the delivery system on their own. Everybody, all the tenants are gonna have different ways to deal with this, and if they need to change their schedules, then that's what they're gonna need to do. They're gonna, they want people to come and go here, right? I mean, they're in business to make money, they're in business to, for customer service, they're not gonna tolerate having semis blocking their drive-through lanes. So, if that becomes a problem for them, they're gonna be the first ones to get on their delivery guide. Um, and I think that we can address this internally with the development, rather than, uh, looking, uh, beyond that at this point. And I'm happy to do that.
Is, is, do you mind if I ask, is that a condition that you would be willing to let us just in, add so that it's part of what we document to say that you will have that discussion?
Sure, you can put it as a condition that I'll have a conversation- Sure, you can put it as a condition that I'll have a conversation with them to happen.
It's soft, but at least then it's addressing it, and I'll ask if you're, if you're okay with something like that.
Yeah.
You're okay?
Mr. Chair.
I, I mean, I, I wholly agree, I don't, I don't think the burden exists on one side. I, I hundred percent on page with that, I'm just looking at the entire thing here. Not connect, you know, when we have a surge volume business at the very end of a dead-end road, I get concerned about what's coming through there. And it, I, I just, I think that's a challenge. I, I am comfortable with, you know, if you're willing to commit to that and commit to it as a part of it, and, you know, I guess I would maybe just add that you send us what you decide as part of, as part of that condition.
I mean, I'm happy to have these conversations, and it's really going to be the business owners that are going to make those decisions, though. I mean, it's not me, right? I'm, I'm not, I don't have a business there. So those tenants are going to make the decisions on what works best for their schedules. So again, I, we can't, I don't want to dictate to them how they perform their own business here. But I can assure you that they don't want this to be any more of a conflict than you do, right? They want to do their business as is, they want to keep business open, they want to keep their customers happy. So I don't foresee them not being on top of the delivery systems here, just like all of the other buildings are. So if there is an issue with, with somebody parking on one lot or another, they're going to, I think, address that internally. And I'm happy to have the conversation, but I can't dictate anything to them on how they do it on their own internal properties. I mean, that's, that's not, I don't have that authority, so.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Casey.
That kind of satisfies what I was thinking, too. This is, this is a grouping of businesses, I mean, they're, you know, they do have their own self-interest in mind. And I'm thinking, let the adults in the room work it out to their benefit. I mean, they're going to have to have conversations, and if you can start that, I think that's a good place.
Happy to.
Yeah, I, I think just the nature of the development, and they, they need to work that out to the best benefit. And I, I think it'll move traffic and bring in business.
Thank you.
Do you have any plans of having a bike rack or anything for this building?
I certainly can, I don't know if it was, was it in the plan?
Yeah, on the north side, there's a potential patio for if there were a restaurant tenant or.
I think it would be kind of like what's at Jimmy John's currently, there's a little bike pad and a patio next to each other there, where they have the patio there.
A specific bike rack so they'd be able to lock their bikes up to the rack?
Right, exactly.
Because I don't see it on your plan here at all.
You can certainly, if that's something you wanted to add on there, that's, that's fine. But that's the intention.
Thank you. Well, before we go any farther here, let's have our public hearing. I'll open the public hearing then for planning case twenty-six, it's site plan approval for the multi-tenant commercial building at one-eight-two-five Gateway Drive. Anyone wish to speak public hearing on this matter? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. So Commissioner Schmokey, you were thinking of adding a condition?
So I'm not, I'm trying to think about how it would be worded, right? So how are we, how are we addressing it? So that there's a commitment of the petitioner to meet with neighboring businesses to address.
Let's call it internal discussions or something like that?
Internal discussions, yep, to, yeah, to address, or to, to conduct an internal discussion around.
That will rest with the business owners?
Yeah, delivery traffic flow.
Still don't know how to word it, right?
I, I guess in, in my opinion, asking them to have a conversation and having no output that we get is a moot cut condition.
Agreed.
So I, I don't, I think we've heard that the applicant has agreed to do that pretty clearly. Again, to Commissioner Casey's point, let's let the adults be responsible and accountable.
Just let it go.
And I think we just stick with the additional landscaping one only at this point. You know, I, I think my, I think we all have similar concerns about this, but at the same time, there's not much that can be done after a PUD was developed forever ago effectively.
I, I totally agree, since there isn't, you know, a response that we can actually receive back. I'm fine with that, I appreciate the conversation, I appreciate you carrying the microphone and addressing the concerns, too, so, thank you.
However, I think we will add a condition for the bike rack.
Oh, good point.
And Mr. Chair, one other thing, you, you mentioned the.
The landscape.
Of three additional bushes or something along that south border between Taco Bell and this. I noticed the landscaping, there's one tree there, but you had brought it up, did we ever get a definitive?
Is there a certain type of bush that needs to go in there?
I don't care, I mean, I just, there's lots of blank space to fill, and maybe there's a grade differentiation and won't make any difference.
Do they have trees here?
Probably.
Maybe Taco Bell has something on their property.
Well, that's what I was thinking, that I didn't, and I don't know the answer right off, off my head, but I just didn't want it to, you don't want to have two trees growing into each other back to back, right?
No, no, yeah.
So we would need to look at something that.
Well, any additional screening or something, I don't, maybe they already have it in place.
Mr. Harlecker, what, what are these? Two little, look like circle stars, one on the Taco Bell property and one it looks like right at the, on the center, right on the line on the south end?
Are you talking along here?
Uh, right there, and then.
I believe that's probably a light pole.
Oh, all right.
And these other ones are probably trees, like some sort of ornamental tree.
There's another one of the same symbol on the Taco Bell corner.
Yep, those are light poles.
Yeah.
Does that designate that Japanese lilac tree?
Those are designated as light poles per the plan. So there, there's, looking at the overhead here, there's a light pole on the western curve of the Taco Bell. Actually, the pole in the south side that's indicated here kind of puts us where we'll have three lights with the additional condition of the one on the peninsula, the one that's indicated on the plan, and then Taco Bell has one on their property there. So there's kind of three decorative, you know, lights that are facing down. The bulk of the, actually, the blank space is on Taco Bell's property.
Yeah.
It's, it's not here. I guess I, I wouldn't be inclined to add landscaping on the south side of this. Yeah, I, I think we missed it with Taco Bell. Is probably where we're at on that. Yeah.
So leave that off.
I would, I would leave the south, the south line off and just stick with the west line for the PUD.
All right.
And that's the condition we added, so are we up to eight conditions?
No, we got nine.
Bike rack. I just thought the bike rack is the only one we're adding, though.
Well, we got number eight, the additional landscaping on the west side.
Okay. And is there a particular landscaping plan that they need to follow?
Just, that would be.
According to the PUD, correct?
Yeah, according to the PUD, and, and as approved by commissioner, staff.
What side does the bike rack go?
I'll just leave that up to.
To the site.
Petitioner to make, put it wherever they can fit it. But probably on the north side where the patio is. It's totally up to them. All right, do we have anyone ready for the motion now?
Mr. Chair, I'm ready to make a motion.
Commissioner Schmokey.
In planning case twenty-six, I recommend approval of the proposed site plan with the following conditions. All engineering comments be addressed, a site security agreement be entered into with the city, all signs require separate permits, a sidewalk be constructed that connects with the existing sidewalk on the Taco Bell site, light fixtures be consistent with those established in the PUD, a decorative light fixture be installed in the peninsula adjacent to the Taco Bell site, a crosswalk be installed across the drive aisle adjacent to Taco Bell site. And then the two additional conditions, condition number eight would be the addition of landscaping according to the PUD and as approved by staff.
On the west side.
On the west side. And condition number nine, then, is the addition of a bike rack.
I'll second that.
Motion by Schmokey, second by Casey. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion carries. That's a decision by the planning commission and can be appealed to the city council within ten days if someone chooses. Congratulations and good luck.
Thank you very much.
All right, our next case, planning case twenty-five. A registered land survey to subdivide vacated street easement at three-one-one-zero-one-hundred-thirty-first Avenue, David Martz, Mr. Harlecker.
Yeah, Chair and Commissioners, this is a proposed registered land survey. The reason it's not a regular lot split is because the legal descriptions of the property, abstract versus tolerance. So that's, that's the reason for the RLS process. Back in two thousand and four, the two adjoining property owners petitioned the city to vacate what was half right-of-way going through here, street easement. City did approve that vacation, and the property went to the, was transferred to the property to the north, the Seaches. Property owner to the south, the Martzes, have been in discussions with the Seaches. And what they're proposing to do is take that strip of vacated street easement and split it in two, with half of it being transferred to the property owner to the south, the Martzes, and the remainder staying with the current ownership. Here's the survey of the property with the two houses. This here, going from here up to this dash line, was the old easement. What's being proposed is the south half of that be created as track B, and the remainder of that, the north half, along with the existing lot, be track A. And here's what the registered land survey will look like. This track B will have to be combined with the adjoining property owner here on lot nine. With that, I'll answer any questions. And staff is recommending that the planning commission recommend approval with the condition that all engineering comments be addressed and track B be combined with lot nine to the south.
Thank you, Mr. Harlecker, commission, any questions from Mr. Harlecker?
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Geisler.
Mr. Harlecker, just one quick question, both parties are amenable to how this is laid out at this point?
Yep, they both signed off on the application.
Perfect, thank you.
Mr. Harlecker, or Mr. Chair?
Commissioner Casey.
So historically, was there ever a road that went to the lake?
Uh, no, there was not.
Okay, never, it was there potentially, but never.
Yep, and the two adjoining property owners petitioned the city to vacate it, and city deemed they didn't need that easement anymore and vacated it.
Yeah, okay.
Anything else, Mr. Harlecker? All right, at this time, I will open a public hearing in planning case twenty-five. A registered land survey to subdivide vacated street easement at three-one-one-zero-one-hundred-thirty-first Avenue. Anyone wish to speak at this public hearing? Seeing none, we will close the public hearing. And commission.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Casey.
I'll make a motion in planning case twenty-five that we recommend approval of the proposed registered land survey with the following conditions. All engineering comments be addressed and track B to be combined with lot nine to the south.
Second.
Motion by Casey, second by Geisler, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion carries, this is a recommendation by the planning commission and a decision by city council at the July seventh meeting. And our next case, planning case twenty-seven, site plan for new creations childcare at one-eight-zero-five Gateway Drive, Rylo LLC, Mr. Harlecker.
Yeah, Chair Schwartz and Commissioners, this is the site here. This is the one we just looked at for the multi-tenant building. They're proposing a two-story childcare center. This is the site plan. Current city code requires, I believe, thirty-two parking spaces and thirty-four spaces are provided. They've got the building here, outdoor play areas surrounding it. They've got a garden area back here along the floodplain with a storage building. The front part of this will be used as for the dumpster enclosure, and the other half will be equipment storage. You've got the main access here coming in off of Hanson with access into the site at this point here. This is the grading plan here, a stormwater pond along Hanson, as well as an area back in here where they're grading. Again, this will have to be approved by the engineering, and they are reviewing it, as well as Coombe Creek watershed. Anything along the creek requires watershed approval. This here is the proposed monument sign, it's right there on the site plan. That'll be for this building here as well as the multi-tenant building to the, to the west. Here's the landscape plan. They do have trees along the driveway here, as well as scattered throughout the site. The overstory trees here will provide shade for this play area, and the building and this overstory trees will help provide shade for the back area back here. And they've got the overstory trees at the curb here, and then along the front of the building, as well as shrubs and perennials around the building. This here is a sidewalk that wraps around the building, provides emergency access for these doors here. Building elevations, it's really, it's a mix of materials. This is the, the east elevation, so this is what faces Hanson Boulevard. This is the south with the main entrance area here. This faces the Chibi. This faces the Jimmy John's Taco Bell site. And this is the, the west elevation that faces the proposed multi-tenant and this would be the, the rear of the building that faces Coon Creek. And this shows up a little bit better, the materials. You've got the, the brick and stone that match the other buildings in the development. You've got a gray hardy plank siding here and then a metal, architectural metal piece here that covers the, the entry atrium into the project as well as provides an outdoor space up above. This is looking at it from Hanson Boulevard looking to the northwest, I would say. This is another perspective, looking at it more from over by the Jimmy John's corner of the building. Again, you've got the, the brick base that wraps around it and the stone on the columns with the hardy plank siding. Here's the materials that are being proposed. And you've got the stone and brick and you've got the hardy plank siding, the metal panels along here and then the other aluminum across the top of the buildings and decorative around the windows. With that, I'll answer any questions. The applicant is in the audience also and he can go into a little more detail about the actual operations of the daycare center as well as the architectural design and materials.
Thank you, Mr. Harlecker. Commission, any questions from Mr. Harlecker? All right, if the petitioner'd like to come up and give presentation, give your name and address, please, for the record.
Good evening, I'm Peter Hilger from Ryler LLC, fourteen Pheasant Lane, North Oaks, Minnesota. I am the architect for New Creations. I just wanted to appreciate the, being here today and actually being able to bring this particular development into Coon Rapids. I will tell you that, and I'll expand a little bit on the traffic issues that I suspect you probably asked earlier today. We can certainly expand on that, but I can absolutely and affirmatively tell you that our kids do not drive trucks and store them in the parking lot, but they may do it in the playground, okay? Just wanted you to know that. All right. I'm happy to hear, answer any questions, but why don't I dive right into the traffic because I think that was the issue that was of great concern. When we initially looked at this, these two sites actually, we considered initially the site to the west. That was where we had our initial purchase agreement was where you just considered the retail building. I decided against that particular site because it did not have the geometry necessary for our development in the relationship of classroom spaces to play areas in which we like to have a direct connection from inside to outside without having to go through any parking or so forth. This particular site also had the advantage of being closer for visibility purposes to Hanson Boulevard for the business, but it also required that we would need to elevate the building into two stories, which is a little unusual for childcare centers but is evolving in particularly difficult sites, challenging sites. This site also, along with the rest of the sites, obviously has deep soil condition issues and the placement of this building at that, at this particular location also allows us to use a conventional footing system with soil correction as opposed to a more expensive peer system. The site also allows us to have very adequate play areas with excellent frontage to the Coon Creek environment, which is, we, we believe to be very ideal as an environment, not only seen from the classrooms especially by the older kids from the second level as well as with the play space itself. So that's kind of the philosophical underpinnings of this. Now to address the traffic issue a little bit, let me just say that I also like this site because it's a dead end, all right? If I'm looking at a site for traffic purposes, I would much rather be at the end of a parking lot than at the beginning of a roadway. In other, I want to be at the end because that's where the least amount of traffic will occur, all right? So this site has the advantage that we have the right turn in off of Hanson Boulevard and then you have to make a turn back into the parking lot. All of the parking spaces that you see along the north side of the main parking lot are basically reserved for our parents with kids. Parents, uh, kids are not dropped off, they are escorted into the center. So there is no, there is no drive-through drop-off here, okay? You have to bring the kids in, you have to sign in, you have to see them off and then you leave. A typical transaction time for that kind of a, of an event is oftentimes five minutes to ten minutes at the most, you know, depending upon the crankiness of the child at that particular time of the morning. So most, all of the parking that you see on the north side is basically reserved for parent drop-off and pickup. Employee parking is reserved for the parking stalls on the west as well as the parking stalls on the south side of that area. Now it's important to understand that with childcare, not all twenty-five staff show up at the same time. There is a staggering of staff that come to the site over the course of the day and that also leave at the site because we have hours that go from six-thirty to six PM, six-thirty AM to six PM. So we will have staggered staff times and a lot of those stag, those staggered times occur when we are least busy in terms of the traffic, the parking lot drop, drop, drop-off, if you will. Most of the drop-offs will occur based upon my studies of childcare centers in the Twin Cities, and I've done approximately ninety childcare centers over the last thirty years. About seventy percent of the drop-offs occur within that six-thirty to nine AM timeframe, all right? That's when most of them occur, some of them come a little bit later. Pickups will start early in the afternoon for people that work either part-time or different shifts as well as to the end of the closing time at around six o'clock. And the density of traffic exiting the site is typically much less during the pickup period of time than it is in the morning period of time. Now, that happens to work well for a retail environment such as this development because retail typically does not open until nine AM for most retail applications, so we're sort of offset on that with the exception of coffee, you know, and, and drive-up and gasoline, which we have at this site. So if I'm a parent coming to this site, I am going to drive in, drop off, go to Caribou, leave, go to work and come back, that order might be, might be reversed. This particular traffic orientation, I, I am not at all troubled by the discussion that you had earlier with the previous applicant or what we see here, provided that we have that stop sign at the end of the, of the inbound lane, which there, I believe there is a stop sign there right now. And we've specifically designed this parking lot to be, you have to make a turn into the parking lot and it's going to be slow. You're starting from a stop, making a full one-hundred-and-eighty-degree turn into the parking lot and that's basically a slow-moving operation. So I don't have very many concerns about that. Exiting, we come to the end of the parking lot and then we have to move left, back out, straight, so it's only a ninety-degree turn, it's not a hundred-and-eighty-degree turn to get back out. It's a ninety-degree left turn to get out. Don't have any concerns with that either, all right? So, like I said, just to sort of reemphasize, having this on a dead end helps me very much. In terms of parking, I have done an extensive amount of parking analysis and I'm happy to hand this out. Did they, they didn't receive?
They didn't, no.
Okay. What I've done here, what I've done here today is provided you an analysis of parking and I will tell you right now that Coon Rapids is in the sweet spot of parking, permissible parking within the metro area for, for childcare centers. What you see at the top of this page are developed site comparisons. In other words, these are, what I've listed for you here are existing childcare centers with the total building area, the licensed capacity, as well as the number of staff that are, that the site is licensed for, and then the ratios that develop as a result of that. So our proposed site, using the average of those counts, shows that we would have thirty-four parking stalls if you, if you kind of looked at that particular analysis. If you also look at the ITE Parking Generation Manual, which is the Internet Institute of Traffic Engineering, the ITE Trip Generation Manual uses three methods to determine childcare parking, all right? One method would result in thirty-one spaces, another method would resolve in thirty-eight spaces, a third method would result in thirty-one spaces. The average of those three messages, methods is thirty-three spaces. Again, we're right in the sweet spot. Finally, when you look at the metro area childcare parking ordinance comparison, you can see that compared to other communities, you are kind of smack in the middle. Again, you're in the sweet spot, all right? There are a number of communities that would require fewer parking stalls than you do and some communities that would require more. And there are several communities that, such as Lino Lakes that you see here, for this center would require fifty-seven parking spaces. But Lino Lakes, having just completed a center in Lino Lakes, I know that they take allowed traffic, a traffic deferment plan. So all you have to do is to present the evidence and they will, they will rely upon the evidence of a traffic study and the evidence of an operations, demonstrated operations to prove the case for parking, which they did. And so I just wanted to point out to you, and I think this was to your comment, Commissioner Geisler, that whether there was adequate parking, there is absolutely adequate parking here based upon my experience with ninety-plus childcare centers, okay? I can, I can affirm that for you. So with respect to the, again, the traffic issues overall, I just want to say that I believe that we are in the right spot and I am, I don't have any concerns about the movements or about even the traffic density that we'll experience on this particular site. With that, all of the other conditions that you have outlined in your staff report, we have no objections to. We did include a bike rack, it's actually kind of a cute one. And with me today, I do have the CEO from New Creations here, Mr. Ryan Carlson, if you're interested in asking questions, I'm available to answer any further questions for you at this time.
Thank you. Commission, any questions for petitioner?
Yes, Chair Schwartz, I have a question.
Commissioner Geisler.
My only question I had was the type and the height of the fence that borders with the Coon Creek watershed with the creek that's to the north, I believe, of, or northeast of the proposed lot.
All fences, according to the New Creations standards, are four feet high.
Okay.
Generally, industry standard is between four feet and five feet typically.
Okay. And the composition, like chain link, wood?
Chain link, yep.
Okay.
Specifically coated chain link is what's listed in the packet.
Did you say it was coated?
Coated, black-coated.
Okay.
Assuming you stick into the plan.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Casey.
So I had a question about that retention pond that sits, you know, between the building and Hanson Boulevard. Is, is that anticipated to be full or is it surrounded by anything? What do you, what are we looking at there?
I can perhaps have Chad Akers respond to that as our civil engineer. We're doubling up on you tonight.
Sure. Yes, like Peter said, we're, we're still in early discussions with the Coon Creek watershed as we will have to go in and get a watershed permit. That front area along Hanson, when, by the, when we submitted these plans, we were thinking it's, it's going to be kind of a low-depth infiltration basin. So to your, to your question, we're not proposing that it's holding water, it's, it's an infiltration basin. So again, most designs call for an infiltration basin to draw down and soak in within forty-eight hours. So it's not a wet pond.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else, questions for petitioner? All right, thank you. May have more later. Okay. All right, at this time I will open a public hearing in planning case twenty-seven, the site plan for New Creations Child Care at one-eight-zero-five Gateway Drive. Anyone present who wish to speak at the public hearing on this matter? Seeing none, we close the public hearing. And commission, thoughts?
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Geisler.
So first of all, I'd like to say that this is an excellent-looking development, so it's props to you for that. And also, thank you for bringing a whole bunch of data. This is definitely the kind of benchmarking that I'd like to see to help explain why we're, we're doing what we're doing. I can tell you that off the cuff, when I first looked at this, thirty-four seemed slim, especially thinking that two-thirds of that would be occupied by staff at full capacity. Looking at the fact that it's rarely fully staffed, or it's really fairly occupied from a, from a childcare perspective, you know, I do think that it, it does start to make a little more sense seeing all the numbers fully laid out, especially with this additional regional analysis here. I, I, I do still think that, I, I have some concerns that, you know, sometimes you get ten parents showing up at the same time and we'd be overflowing into the other applicant's presumably curved space where there's parking there or into the Caribou lot. So I, I, I do worry about that because while children are escorted, children are children, they get to, they well run around, having a two-year-old, they go. But I do think that the plan is, is fairly adequate and backed by good, solid data and information. I will say that the applicant did mention a stop sign at the end of the right end off of Hanson. There is not one, that's currently a smooth flow-through. Since we've mentioned that this is a private land piece, I would assume that that stop sign would be placed by then, by the, by the applicant versus the city since it's no longer up City Drive. So I, I would maybe consider that we require a stop sign at the end of that right end off of Hanson therefore, as the applicant mentioned, to ensure that traffic is not coming in off that road quickly. I think that helps everybody, honestly, around here.
So you want to add that as a condition number?
I, I, I would, I would pitch that as, to the commission if they agree with that for discussion, but I think that's a reasonable one and the applicant even men, brought it Otherwise, I, actually I, I do have one quick question. On the, the preschool surface and the toddler surface, are those grass, are they mixed media, are they rubberized, just what kind of materials are we looking at in those play spaces?
The standard for New Creations is a combination, will have some hard surface, which would be concrete for hard play surfaces. Fall zones underneath playground equipment will be ex-grass with foam under it, which is basically an artificial turf with foam. A large portion of the bounds, especially the preschool playground there, would all be natural turf.
Perfect, thank you. That's all I have, Mr. Chair, thank you.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Casey.
So you're saying the hardscape that's delineated here on the, the plan, that's the concrete?
Well, that is, what it is, is hard, social distancing here. What it is, is hardscape for the purposes of calculating infiltration, okay? So my hardscape can consist of some concrete, some crushed compacted rock with foam with ex-grass on top of it. So... So it's not very pervious, you know, it's, has limited porosity. So from that standpoint, from a calculation perspective, it's considered hard surface.
Okay. Then I have one other question about your balcony, and I'm thinking your top floor is the older kids?
Yes.
That you're going to have, and then the bottom floor, the toddlers. So what's the surround on that balcony? It looks like a, is it plexiglass that sits above the bel, you know, railing?
Well, the, the railing is set back from the roof edge, and that's just simply a safety, and what we do, we generally plan for any kind of railings is that, that are non-climbable, all right? So we wouldn't use plexiglass because it doesn't age well. We'd probably use some sort of a, a picket or something like that that is not easily climbable, or a small mesh. Uh, that's what we were kind of showing there, is a very small mesh that you can't get your, your, you know, size-one shoes into.
Feeding, yeah.
And that, that classroom is just simply a, an outdoor space to bring people from the large motor room. It's a, a smaller activity space. It's not a large crowded space. This is a new element for New Creations. I, I think, um, it's, um, sort of an opportunity that, to create a, a different environment and make it attractive for kids.
It's a very attractive building grounds. Uh, you've done well. It's very, it'll, it'll be a nice addition.
The monument sign, is that going to be something that you folks will put, be putting in eventually after you get permits?
Well, the monument sign, originally, the monument sign was, um, shown on the, I believe, on the original plat as being farther to the north on Hanson Boulevard. Uh, you can see where it's being pointed out right now, but, um, the utility company came in and planted two large utility boxes right there, so, um, we cannot put a sign there. So we have proposed to relocate that common sign for the purposes of the P U D in this location, which will also improve its visibility overall. How that, uh, I'm assuming that that monument sign, the cost of which would be shared between our, our two entities, because we only benefit in a limited fashion by that sign. But we had to, by obligation to the seller, provide a, uh, a, a right, a, a space for a common monument sign.
And Mr. Hariker, if you could go back to that picture that it showed the front of the building there. There, there we go. So what, is this pretty represent, representative of what you believe the monument sign would be then?
Yes, we, we literally copied that from the one that is right across the street, right across the driveway that serves the Caribou Coffee Building, so it's a common monument sign.
Then I guess my question would be, and I don't know if for you or for the developer, but the top half is obviously for your New Creations Childcare. The bottom, you're going to list five businesses in that small space on the bottom?
No. I don't think it would be clear enough to put five people in there. So it's probably, it's likely that we'll have a larger tenant in the building and not have five tenants. I mean, that's what my thought is. So the larger tenant would get access to that monument sign. So it's more of a preference for somebody in the building that you reviewed earlier, so.
All right. I just wanted to make sure that the sign wouldn't enlarge because you've got so many more tenants.
Right. No.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Casey.
I have one more question. We've talked about semis and all kinds of delivery trucks. Your facility gets a catered meal, and is it five days a week that you're open?
Yes.
That the hours would be, so what kind of a truck delivers your catered meals?
Ryan, my turn. Ryan Carlson. Uh, we, uh, we actually make the food for all of our locations at Central Site Blaine, and it's delivered in minivan, uh, to the locations, three days a week.
Okay. How come three?
Uh, because two of the days are cold days, so those are delivered within the other two days.
Yeah, okay.
So, yeah.
Let me choose.
Yep, and they are actually delivered prior to us opening for the day.
Oh.
Yep.
Okay. Thank you.
And Mr. Hariker, a question for you, I guess. Do we need, since you, there's been mention of meeting requirements for the Coon Creek watershed, do we need any condition to that respect?
Yeah, Chair, you could add that as a condition, but it's, uh, formal process as part of the review process. Building permits aren't issued until, uh, Coon Creek watershed signs off on applications that they.
So something to the effect of meet conditions of Coon Creek watershed?
Yeah, or, um, you just say prior to the issuance of building permits, um, they must receive Coon Creek watershed permit.
That sounds good to me.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Schmokey.
I have just one question. On the road that is coming in, um, between the Caribou, um, Jimmy John's and this New Creations, does that road have a name? So I was trying to think in terms of, of writing up the additional condition for that too. It's easier to state that it's the furthest north, excuse me, yeah, furthest northwest end of what? How do we describe that road then if it doesn't have a name? Stumped ya? So the entrance road, should we just refer to it as the entrance road, the furthest, the furthest endpoint of the entrance road?
Yeah. Yeah, appearing.
I guess for a placement, because you just, I, although I know it wouldn't happen, you would hate to see a stop sign get entered, get added right at the beginning, so, you know, at the entrance, so. It, I know it wouldn't make sense, but I figure we should probably give it a placement.
I mean, I, I think, you know.
At the southwest median property.
I would think the stop sign, you're talking about a...
Right there.
Right here. Right by the crosswalk.
That is correct, yeah. Yes, right by where that crosswalk is, actually, where number eight.
Probably put it behind the...
Right, exactly. Right, but in that proximity, right?
Yep.
So say maybe in the proximity of the sidewalk at...
Or you could say east of the, east of the crosswalk.
East of the crosswalk.
Between the Caribou and the New Creations property.
The way I wrote it down, the way I wrote it down was stop sign on drive-in roadway prior to driveway entrance.
Perfect.
It works.
You get to make the motion.
Yeah, I make the motion.
No, I know, it doesn't work. So prior to the what, did you say, prior?
Prior to driveway entrance.
But along the, the, this road, right? So again, it's not, we're not looking for...
On the drive-in roadway.
Yeah, the drive-in road, yeah.
We'll get it in the right place, don't worry.
Perfect.
Anyone willing to, uh, go with a motion?
I have it open.
Do you have it written down there?
I do, thank you. So, Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Schmokey.
Uh, in Plan Case 20-7, uh, we recommend approval of the proposed site plan with the following conditions. All engineer comments be addressed, all Anoka County Highway Department comments be addressed, a site security agreement be entered into with the city, all signs require separate permits, a crosswalk be installed where the Hanson Boulevard sidewalk crosses the right in access, light fixtures must be consistent with the style established in the P U D, a decorative fixture be where the building sidewalk intersects the Hanson Boulevard sidewalk, and where the Hanson Boulevard sidewalk crosses the right in access. And then the addition of two more conditions, the first being, so it'd be condition number eight, um, is the addition of a stop sign, um, along the driveway prior to the entrance into, um, the right turn into the New Creations entrance, so right, if that makes sense. Um, and, and then prior to the issuance of the permit, of permits, um, they must receive watershed sign-off and approval.
Second. Motion by Schmokey, second by Geisler. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Post. Motion carries. This is a decision by the planning commission and can be appealed to City Council within 10 days if someone so chooses. Congratulations and good luck.
Thank you very much.
Very exciting.
Thank you, everyone.
Other business? Mr. Hariker, you have anything?
Um, I think, I can hear the report. The, the two, uh, storage centers, self-storage buildings are underway, same as last month. Um, they're, they're making headway. Lot of decks, lot of storage sheds, people are finding projects to do.
Yeah.
So, uh...
But nothing, Mr. Hariker, on those, um, those four lots that were approved, um, you know, behind, um, off of 121st, um, Lane, I think it is, 121st Lane, um, north on Hanson, and take a left or go west on 121st Avenue, and then off, just south of 121st Lane, there were those four lots.
Oh, that little cul-de-sac, yep.
Yeah, nothing's been done there.
No, there have, nope.
Just sitting on that.
They've got final approval and, um...
They haven't.
Or they haven't gotten final approval yet. They got preliminary approval.
Oh.
Um, and that's good for a year.
Okay.
They haven't taken any action on final approval.
Yeah, there's no buildings demolished or anything yet.
No, I don't think the house has been demolished.
No, doesn't look like it.
And Mr. Hariker, we have anything on the agenda for next month yet?
We have one item. It's a townhouse development you'd probably be familiar with, a six-unit building, um, by Hoover on 109.
Oh.
Um, the original, uh, developer said not to move forward with the project, and their approval expired. Um, another builder came forward with a very similar site plan. Um, so you'll be seeing the site plan and, uh, preliminary plat next month for that. Um, the, the only real difference, I haven't seen the building elevations, they're still refining those, um, but on the one that was approved a couple of years ago, uh, the, uh, building, front of the buildings faced the west, and the rear of the buildings faced the school. They flipped that around because in part from the comments from the adjacent homeowner, um, they've got the driveway and garages facing the school, and the rear of the units and the patios, um, facing the west.
Nice.
Otherwise, the, the layout is pretty similar. There is really only one way you can develop that site.
All right. And welcome to our loved attorney, Mr. Blair Pacini.
Apologies, we lost power at the house. I'm here now.
We had a ton of legal questions for you, but Scott handled them.
Did you really?
We actually had a couple.
In your name.
We got through it.
We got through it.
What's that?
I got promoted.
I'm sorry. If I, I didn't even have his phone number, or I would've called.
It's okay.
I'm sorry, guys, I really apologize for being late.
Was that the Andover end of?
Yeah, it wasn't long, and then, don't even, it was a whole thing.
Life happens.
It does. My apologies, guys, I'm really sorry. Phil, my wife goes, "Did you miss it?" I'm like, "I hope not." "Was my entrance on TV?"
We're still on.
Yes, we're still on.
We're still on, but, I, I don't know if the cameras picked you up, but... Anyone else with anything for other business? You entertain a motion to adjourn?
I, I moved it adjourned.
Motion by Casey, second by Nablock, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, post. Need adjourn.